Good evening, everyone. Welcome to today's study session. Today we'll continue our study on re-betting. And we've worked from the blind positions to late position. But today, we're gonna take a look at how we three bets against the early position players from the low jack. So these are all going to be pretty tight ranges. So there's gonna be some different dynamics that we've seen when we've been playing from the back end from the later positions. So without further ado, we will launch in here. Get ahead and we will take a look at some raising heuristics and ranges. So the type of hands that we're going to be looking to three bet here are going to be heavily containing an ace or a king blocker. You can see that there's a value portion that wants to raise pretty frequently here. And these are all very value based hands. Jacks are good, queens are good, kings are good, ace king is good. These hands definitely want to raise and put in a lot of money. Because our opponent is going to have a pretty tight range construction is gonna have a hard time folding. So when our value wants to do this, we have to find a pretty wide array of bluffs. And so we take a look at like ace queen, ace jack. All these suited tens, suited nines, our suited eights. All of these pairs at some frequency are going to find some three bets. And so when we three bet our opponents, if we are linear in our construction and we're only three betting them with aces, kings, queens, jacks and ace king. Our opponent just gets the fold. So we need to find some bluffs that were okay folding if our opponent decides to jam it in. And we can see that when we have a raised structure and it comes back to under the gun who goes all in. Our call off range is going to be pretty narrow. Right? So mixing folds with eights and nines. And really calling, you can see a pretty big disparity between jacks and tens here. Right? So calling tens plus and ace king. Why don't we? Stop. Oh. Get aboard. And then we can take a look at some of the reports here. So in some three bet pots. Filter this for monotone boards to start with. And take a look at the monotone strategy. Opponent checks to us. And you can see our strategy is going to be robust with betting. But we are going to be using very small sizes on monotone boards. The exception is going to be on these king with another Broadway boards. These cool jack ten boards. So as we saw with with other elements. When the top two cards are very connected, there's a little bit of sizing up in the frequency. And again, when the Broadway board runs out with two or three Broadway cards. There is a lot of polarization. So we wind up with a lot of big bets here on these boards. But for most of the strategy in monotone, it is going to be betting small and betting frequently. Again, on monotone boards that are ace mid mid or ace low low. Is really only where we find checking on monotone boards and three bet pots. Against the flush draw boards. Our opponent is going to check. And we are going to be betting a lot small. Right? Only checking about 10% range as a whole across all textures of flush draw boards. Primarily betting small. And a little bit of big stuff. Our big stuff is going to come from connected boards. So four, three, two with a flush draw. Five, four, two with a flush draw. Right? Things that are kind of below our opponent's range. Slightly connected boards, eight, seven, five, eight, seven, six. And then here we go. Jack ten with the flush draw, very common board just to ship it in. Right? But again, there's not a lot of the midsize bets. It's all in or bets very small a lot. Same with our queen connected. We still have that element. Our king connected a little bit less so choosing the more like pot sized bets or 80% pot sized bets. Our low aces are where we start to find some checks with a flush draw. And our high aces have a little bit of the medium and bigger size bettings. On rainbow textured boards. We can see again now that the flush isn't a driving factor. The straight connection becomes even more of a factor. We see a little more of this large size betting throughout the the population of the board. Even less checking now than when there's a flush draw. As boards become more and more connected, right? Like we look at Jack deuce deuce. Where it is mostly small betting. As it starts to become more and more connected with the high cards. We see this very polar strategy around here. A little bit of that still in queen jack, but not nearly so prevalent as jack ten. And then a bit more of that in king jack. And connected to Broadway cards with a king. King boards, you can see there's just no checking frequency on king boards. They're by far the best card for us. Ace little and ace medium betting small occasional checking. And ace big is betting and betting a fair bit of the larger size. Last but not least, we'll take a look at paired boards. And then we'll get down to some hard work. So we can see on the paired board size, we are primarily just betting small across pretty much all textures. At fairly high frequency. When we have a jack as a top card. We now start to have some upsizing. Picking some slightly larger sizes occasionally. Queens a little bit as well. The queens. Kings in kind of a weird way where we've normally been betting all of our kings. We continue on with that here. But on the king low lows, we are betting small a lot. And on the king, as the card gets higher and higher. We start using more of the bigger sized frequencies. Up until more of the Broadway end where we just start using our smaller sizes again. And then when the ace is paired, it is a bet small spot. Almost everything in range, just that's small. So that'll get us going on the flop and we'll do some work on specific turns as we get deeper into different spots. But let's take a look. Ace ten. Lots of calling, three betting. We're always gonna choose the three bet option today so that we can play these spots. And we get a flush draw to Broadway paired board, everything that we've looked at except monotone. Alright. Should we bet? How big? We should be bet. Why?
That was a big bet, right?
Queen jack connected with a flush draw?
Yeah.
There could definitely be some big bets on this board.
I thought, yeah, I thought that was a big bet on the flush or even some Orleans was like in the in the reports.
Yep. Is this a hand that wants to go all in?
Was that?
Were we jamming the paired boards? I don't think so, right?
We'll take a look.
Yeah, I didn't see the paired board, but flush draw two high cards is on the straight was like all in or big bet. So I go with eight.
Personally, I'd bet four in game.
Yeah, I think there's gonna be some mixing between the four and the eight here. I'll see that as much. Primarily just four though. Thought it would have some mates with the queen jack connected. Let's take a look at how this specific spot rolls out to our strategy.
He'll have a lot of auto folds.
Let's see. Alright, so our strategy is primarily just betting small, a little bit of this. And it is with ace, king and pocket kings. That wanna bet big and ace seven as a bluff, really the worst hand. But primarily.
Jack ten.
Yeah. Yeah, Jack ten is so super nutted here, right?
Yeah.
So our worst jack.
Yep.
Guess we.
Yeah, it's one of those ones. How how good is a card for us that comes over when we have Jack ten of diamonds or Jack ten of clubs? Right? We're pretty far ahead, but nothing is great. Okay. So we give it this bet. And we get stuffed on.
Goodbye.
There are flashes.
It's kind of weird. Yeah.
Okay.
We beat some stuff. Okay, not that.
We don't beat that.
Ace jack. Alright. Okay, thanks for catching up on the chat there, right? Ben Joey? Alright, so king queen. How often are we three betting this?
Eighty percent of the time? Six, yeah, no, sorry. Nah, sixty percent.
Okay.
I go sixty.
I didn't look. Kind of in the middle, forty percent. Interesting though, like this is just as much a fold as it is a three bets.
Wow.
I fold here a lot.
Depends, right?
Classic zero ED hand.
Hmm. Well, since there's no way to play it wrong, let's try and figure out how to play it right. When we get this beautiful hand, alright. Is anyone else wanting to go all in?
This is a high favorite, she's longer. Oh, well, I'll probably bet. I'm not sure how everybody else would do.
I bet one.
Okay.
Uh.
B twenty-five, I bet four.
Yeah, four or eight, I think four.
Bet one. Alright, I can get behind both betting one and betting four here. Our opponent's gonna have a lot of continues on this board still. So.
Maybe four is good.
Four is good.
Four is good. Our opponent does just have a lot to continue with for one street for only four chips. But that's not one of them.
Uh.
Alright. Pocket sevens, how often are you three betting this hand if you ever are?
Twelve percent.
Okay.
Yeah.
We three bet early position raises with that in middle.
Fifteen percent, but most of the times I call.
Okay, sounds pretty reasonable. Perfect, twelve percent. So not a very high frequency, but when we do it. Let's see what type of trouble we can get into.
I swear I didn't cheat.
That was right on the spot.
Mostly flopping third there. And what do we wish to do with these pocket sevens?
Hmm. See arguments for quite a few things here.
I see too.
I'm always checking back. Hey?
Check a certain way seems viable.
Oh, I I check or bet half.
But when you're not sure, three bet, c bet. And you can't be too wrong.
We just flat it to the boat, maybe?
No, we'd see bet.
This is three bet day. Every hand we will play will be a three bet. Oh, every hand's, oh, but okay, but didn't it just say eighty-eight percent flat? Oh, but you were guessing, sorry, you were not guessing, but we were discerning determining how often we raise with three bet, which is twelve percent. Okay, got it. Yep. Alright, so again, this hand really wants to check, but our range really wants to bet. Right? When we take a look at everything that kind of goes under the sun here. Three bet pot, ten high board. The ten and the eights are gonna connect pretty well with his calling range. So you can see twenty-two percent checking, sixty-three percent betting. So primarily betting this size and sevens are one of the hands that really want to check here. So if you found to check, good on you. If not, betting is also just fine.
This is the one combo that bets the most.
Yep.
No heart, no spade.
No heart, no spade. Right? So it can't realize any equity in the future, either having a value to to blocking value or it's blocking draws, so. Alright, we pair the top card on the board. Is that good for us or good for our opponents?
It's good for them, but it means they have fewer tens as well. So it's also kind of good for our hand.
Missed by others getting close to one.
Yep.
Is there values still? Like, can we bet small again?
No, no, no.
So it's tough, there's a.
This looks like a check.
If we bet small, we're just pricing in all his draws.
Right.
Right? And there's so many draws here, right?
So we'd rather let them bluff river.
Yeah, queen, jack, nine, jack, spades, hearts. There's so many draws here, like.
Can we bet twelve then?
It is large or nothing.
Right, so it's polarized.
Yeah. So I think it's going to be check or.
Check or bet big, yeah.
I think twelve, not eighteen, because the ten is kind of bad.
Yeah, I can get behind that. We can get away if we're jammed on, but if we bet eighteen, well then we're kind of committed. Yeah.
I bet it mixes the twelve and the eighteen, because just seeing what GTOWIS does.
Gosh, betting twelve and folding to a jam sounds so bad, I think. Yeah, we just want to check.
Checking and.
Like if we bet, we're gonna almost have to call it off, right?
The bigger we bet, the worse it kind of gets here. We're just like hoping for another ten or another seven.
And we have showdown value.
Oh.
Another ten. Oh. Do we have a value bet?
Now we have to check, I think.
No, I think we have a value bet here.
Like, what are we targeting? Four or pocket five?
Yeah, it was.
Ace high.
So.
Some ace, yeah, I guess some ace high.
We get here sometimes with a bricked flush draw. Yeah, so our opponent can still call with some worse pairs.
What's the worst ace high he has? Ace ten, right? Well, no.
Ace eight suit.
He has all the suited aces.
All the suited aces. He has ace eight suit.
It's jack.
Ace seven suited, no.
It's suited. It's a base four. Late ace eight.
Ace eight of a spade. King eight of a spade, maybe.
Well, it's, is it like the turn in a way that if we bet half pot and get jammed on, like, it's just, it's a disaster. We can't, we can't show down? But we don't really have a size that's less, like, we can't really bet eight here. My one spot, so it's, it's probably all in or check. I'm I'm such a knit in these spots. I'm always happy to check back.
No, I want to bet for value, but why can't you bet eight?
That's just, oh, it seems so greedy. Eight into twenty-four, like, you're reopening the action for one-third? Right?
Well, you're looking to get called by curious aces.
What are you gonna do when he raid, when he check raises?
Right?
I check.
If I'm betting anything, I'm betting eight point five, like, one-third pot seems.
I know you don't. I know you don't typically reopen the action for one-third pot, but there are spots where it is used.
Yeah. So, so here's my question. If you're going to bet eight point five and call it off.
Why not go?
Why not go all in?
Well, because. Because the range that shoves to the smaller bet is wider than the range that just calls our shove.
So you think if we bet eight, he's gonna have some bluffs?
Yeah.
He could, like like queen jack or jack nine. Okay. Alright.
So he enjoys, but Joey, you're saying that you bet eight to call off the bluff jam, is that right?
Yeah. If you're gonna shove, you're only getting called by a certain range anyhow. If you, if you bet small, you can get caught off by aces. Um.
I think this is.
Team gray. It's too small if we want to bluff. We want to bluff him off ace high. Unless he does have queen jack, which will fall to eight. So I could see eight being a thing.
I have one argument to go all in, I'm sorry, that.
I can also bet eight point five and fold and like, I don't know, maybe that's a mistake, but in a tournament, like, your life's too valuable. Like, if you bet, if you bet any amount to get jammed on other than all in, of course, it like, it's a disaster with these two sevens. Well, then you should.
Just click call.
Yeah, that's, that's why I'm happy to check. If I'm betting anything, I'm probably going eight point five. Okay, Darren and then Said, Darren?
Yeah.
Okay, and Said?
Uh, I am, are you in the game? I check, but I have one point. So we also could have missed a lot of draws, right? Like flush draw, straight draw. For that reason, I actually may go all in. To get called with the ace high. Ace, king, ace, queen, sometimes they call you.
Yeah, I think there is gonna be some pretty wide calls here with this, but we'll take a look.
I check, yeah.
Checking and a little more than half pot. The fourteen size. So let's take a look at the range and see what happens when there is betting and calling.
All in one percent. It was there.
All in one percent. Alright, so on the river, it goes check and to us. So our specific combo. Nine, sevens is primarily checking with a little bit of this size. But our range is much more all in or check.
Hmm, that's what I was saying, I think.
Yeah. I guess the problem with sevens is sometimes he has an eight here. And he probably calls when we when we bet, when we jam with an eight, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, that makes sense.
When we jam, does he call with an eight? Our opponent calls with all his eights.
Yeah.
Our opponent cars with all his pairs.
Can you do um range height for those really quick?
Sure. Oh, they're not there with them very often.
Yeah.
Right? They're primarily here with a ten. Ace queen, which calls. And ace queen, which calls. And aces. So they're very value heavy here.
Was it ace queen call? Two, right?
Sorry, was that there?
River node in a minute.
Two, correct.
I think we couldn't hear you again.
Oh, ace queen folds a lot there?
Yeah, it's, it's heavily mixing. Right? It wants to it wants to call when it's got a spade and a heart. A lot. Diamond club, pretty minimal.
Walter ace queen bluff catches.
Yep. East queen bluff catches, it's just strong enough.
Could we see his river? The check.
Rivers.
Yeah, he must be blocking a lot for, yeah, that's where all those hands go.
Yeah, he's, he's betting one-third pot a lot. He's betting, he's primarily betting the river.
Yeah, he has.
Turn goes check.
Checks.
So his, so yeah, he's only here with slivers of all of this. And he, look how many tens he checks though, right? Like yeah, checking pocket aces. Well, because he knows that you maniacs are blasting seven, seven on ten, ten, twenty-four.
Got that value. But yeah, I could see why having a pair above the eight is much preferred.
Yeah, yeah, really, that that's spots a spot where you want, you want to check sevens and you want to bet nines. Alright, ace eight suited. I gotta admit, I am thinking high call here. I mean, how often do you guys three bet at AC?
Fifteen, twenty percent.
I'd love to hear that.
Six percent.
Ooh.
Sixty percent. Next, the.
Yeah, that's what I said I cut out.
Danny, you cheating or what?
I was off by a factor of ten.
Sorry. So here we have, we have lock boxed out, we have flop the ace, we have backdoor straight equity. Does anyone else want to get behind checking here with our probably worst eight? Or worst ace? I think, was it Joey that said c bet, three bet? Yep.
Three bet, c bet. Yeah. I hear you, but I still want to bet.
Yeah, you've got to bet this ace.
Okay, going to bet four, well.
Bet four, I I am with you.
Or one.
Okay.
Not one.
How many worst aces does our opponent have? Well, quite, quite a few.
A lot of king jacks who did, he's got, you wanted, then I agree from flush. He called by flush draws. Um, but it's not getting called by worse aces. It's just getting called by other stuff.
Alright, I get you guys are on there. I am checking back here half the time. Twenty-five percent of the time. So if we think of the the hands that were three bet bluffing and the hands that were three betting for value here. I think this ace eight is probably gonna be the worst equity hand that we have. Right? It doesn't have any flush interaction. Ace seven is two pair, ace nine is two pair. Ace ten has the straight draw. And ace king and ace queen and ace jack just have stronger kickers. Right? And so if we look at it.
It has the straight draw too.
Yeah. But it loses to ace ten and ace jack. Yeah. And we can see the ace ten and ace jack are slightly worse in terms of their EV, they're earning ten chips here. Our ace eights earning eleven. But even these ones are just a lot stronger. So this is our third worst ace.
His range, how hard? Does he have every suited ace? Does he only have like, okay? Oh, yeah, he four bets those.
Yeah. So he's missing ace king and missing ace five and ace four. So he's missing ace, king and missing ace, five and ace, four here. And these, these other ones will be a partial frequency too. Right, so he's, he's got some three bets with all of these. And some folds with ace deuce. Right, so look at it, like, I mean, our ace eight is not really that far ahead of very many of his aces.
Yeah, I like betting one here.
But we do deny equity to Queen Jack here, but. See, here's also a spot where we, if we let him turn some equity, turn some stuff. He can turn his hand into a bluff very easily.
True.
Alright.
Check, it might be higher, higher EV against the pool.
Walter was on team C bet, and that was good too. Alright, uh, Queen ten, how frequently are we three betting this? Seated tens definitely gonna wanna see bet, three bet.
Eight, ten percent.
No, higher than that, I think so much higher.
Alright.
Nah, I think fifteen, ten, something like.
Thirty.
Thirty-five. Hundred gun aren't that good, it'll do it. How I would do it less.
Thirty-five.
But pretty low EV here with this one.
I was gonna say thirty-six point four.
Just brought up, just a rough eyeball, oh, stuff a lot for us. We know that this is an ace, king spot only. And that's just what he does. Alright. Oh. Alright, how often are you? Calling with ace, king, cuz we know we wanna three bet a lot. How often do you guys call or do you ever call with ace, king here?
Twenty percent.
Yeah, that seems about right. But.
Tens and twenty percents, okay?
Um, how often?
Man, we're learning tonight.
So here's the thing. Take a look at this spot as a whole, because. There are some players who I play again, who I play against or play with, and when we talk about stuff. They're like, Peter, why on earth are you flatting ace, king here? Don't you wanna play for all the chips? Why are you flating pocket queens and pocket jacks here? And one of the ideas.
EP.
Is against these early positions. You need to protect your calling range. Because if you're three betting kind of a little bit wider here. And three betting ease at a hundred percent frequency. Your calling range becomes so soft. That players down the line get to do what's called squeezing against you. And we'll do some squeeze work uh, in the summer, this summer. And having a protected flating range is pretty important here, because. When you flat pocket queens here. And. The small blind. Uh, comes along and has a strategy that says, okay, we want to raise or jam. When they jam off. Under the gun folds, comes back to us. And we're here with hands that are strong enough to call. When we are always three betting these hands. We never have any hands that really get to call and get it in good against someone who can squeeze us. So. A bit of, a bit of an advanced concept, but. Protecting our flating range. And ace, king and pocket queens and pocket jacks are the hands that can do it. The other thing about that too, with these type of hands. Sometimes when you just flat with them. It allows you to escape a pot where you would have gotten cooler. Right, so. For example, say it's, uh, say we have pocket jacks and our opponent has pocket queens. And there is an ace high flop. We might not lose forty big blinds if we don't three bet that hand. Right, so. That happens to me fairly often, but I see a lot of people who, when I look at their database work. Whenever they have pocket jacks here and there's a better hand, even under the gun one, they always just lose all their chips. Right, so. Uh, this is a spot where we have a fair amount of call to protect, but. We will work on it uh, from the other side since it's three bet day today. And we get a three bet pot. Ooh, very dynamic.
I check.
What a disgusting flop.
Ready gross.
So it is so, it is so a high C bet.
Yeah.
Lord. So I think you just, we just always bet it, I'm just not sure what the sizing is, or almost always bet it, but I'm just not sure what the size is.
If we bet it's four.
If your range bet is four, yeah.
Well, um. So dynamic though.
Depends on my mood.
I think we can get away. A spade in our hands. Um, but I think four. Is good, eight big blinds if we have the ace of spades.
Okay, we'll take a look at that specific heuristic. Yeah, uh, is anyone checking here?
I would.
Yeah, I would definitely check here some. Might be.
Check some, bet force, some, yeah.
Okay, so I'm hearing some check, okay. I think I'm on check here, team check once in a while. Right, I'm definitely betting if I have a spade in my hand though.
So there's nobody.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, very.
Very low. Range.
Hit him that one.
Yeah. So we'll take a look at that specific node and see if the ace of spades makes us wanna bet more here. Having a little backdoor equity, the ability to go run a runner with spade, spades, make the flush. With our ace kings. Uh, they're pretty indifferent to having it. Uh, this.
If, if anything, it may be the opposite.
No, this, the spade is betting a little bit more than like this one over here, right?
Yeah.
It's, it, that's the most with spade heart. Right? Likes the ace of hearts. Really likes the ace of hearts. Less liking the spade. And least liking the combos without anything. Okay. So.
Is that just, is that just because we block continues so much?
Yeah. Uh, so runner, so once we say someone goes runner, runner. It means the turn runs out with a card and then the river runs out with another card, so. Uh. Yeah, two spades come to complete the flush for a guy who had a big spade in their hand. He would go running, running spades.
Yeah. I was just working so curious about the heart, like, is, is the fact that it likes the heart so much because of? It's just we pull.
Yeah, blocks continues.
Yeah, okay.
Alright. I'm not sure how we autopiloted through that, I must have misclicked, sorry guys. Alright, uh, king, queen, have we seen this one before? I think we have, remember?
Yeah, beside.
Yeah. Yeah, chasing the flush. Alright, eight, five, deuce, mid, low, low, flush draw.
What was, okay, nevermind, sorry, we didn't do that yet, okay.
No, bro.
Um. What was the frequency on the, on the key queen? We. Calling.
Right. It was essentially one-third, 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 you could fold it a third, call a third and and raise a, a three better third. They're all, uh, they're all zero EV choices.
Okay.
You can do nothing right, you can do nothing right with king, queen off, sorry Walter, go ahead.
No, I was just saying, I, I wasn't even sure about which one to go for this, no, we can clean.
Yeah.
I like four here.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think with the queen and queen of spades, I think we're okay about four.
Oh, yeah.
Dry low board should be pretty rangy. Range betting.
Oh, little bit of checking back. Right, definitely the preferred highest EV action. So EV stands for expected value.
Neither one of us connects very well here, so we kind of just retain our. And stuff.
Well, the bow. Alright, so we take a look at this one before. We're gonna raise it primarily. But definitely have a lot of flats here. Wanna see everyone next week show up with a flat from low jack against under the gun one, forty big lines deep.
That's there.
Alright, uh, again, nine, five, three, ace, king, we got a spade. Same. Okay.
It's a little different now, the nine's a little more relevant, but yeah, pretty much same thing.
Yeah. Pretty much the same thing.
Little more big betting here, tiny little bit more.
Yep, little less checking, a little more big betting.
Are like ace nine probably wants to big bet a lot.
Goodbye.
I think this is a call.
Sometimes ace can get sticky.
Ace king with a spade.
I guess a call and solver and a fold. At some frequency against population.
Yeah.
Zero EV.
They'll show us like tens a lot.
EV, but mostly calling.
Wow.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's just because the SPR is low and we have often have six clean outs.
Mm-hmm.
And we're occasionally ahead of nut spades and stuff.
Yep, and we have.
Take a look at what our opponent is jamming. Their range here. So what is our opponent jamming?
Mostly flush draws maybe, yeah.
They're jamming. Some nines. Uh, they're here with pocket tens. And then two overs with a flush draw, two overs with a flush draw, two overs with a flush draw, two overs. So all the two overs with a flush draw. All the nines and tens. And then even one over with a flush draws.
Well. Then, then, then does it make sense to really call off?
So part of the thing, part of the reason why we wanna call off is when they're going with two overs and a flush draw. Their overs are actually dominated by us, right, when they have ace, we have ace king. Right, when they have king, queen and we have uh, ace, king. Like lots of times they hit their out and they're no good.
Does that mean we prefer ace, king off with no spade? To unblock more of those combos? Or would we rather? Um. Have a blocker to their flush?
Think we're gonna call more with the spade.
Yeah, we're. We're gonna wanna block value coming in, I think.
And if you, if you think about it, like a speed draw is a very high value hand. So like having the ace of spades or king of spades is pretty important.
It's also like an extra two percent or three percent equity. If it comes to run or flush.
Oh, ace of spades folds. Ace, no, we take king of heart.
The hearts.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so the ace of spades is good. And the ace of spades with the hearts is bad. Right, so.
Do they have any heart hands that they do this with?
I'd imagine they must have a few, cuz they'll have some nine. They'll have some nine high hearts.
Hearts, yeah.
No, like ninety-eight of hearts, ninety-seven of hearts. That they did this with.
I think I noticed if it's your pair plus flush draws.
Yeah, yeah, they're here with nine, seven of hearts doing this. Pair plus backdoor flush draw.
Yeah, that's what I meant.
Yeah.
Alright, I don't exactly see why the king of hearts is relevant, but.
Neither do I.
We don't have to deep dive it.
Not a huge amount. And he just had tens.
Oh.
Alright. So next week, is anyone gonna flat these queens? Cuz.
Yes, sir.
It's the always three bet them.
Only if I'm playing a very good table.
Yeah. I don't play. The games I play, I don't have enough people to worry about squeezing.
Okay. Uh. Ooh, happy days. Do we invite that check raise? The micro size or medium size?
High frequency bet four.
Yep. Little bit of this, little bit of that. Savage check.
With jacks, do we start to bet eight at a reasonable amount, a reasonable frequency?
Let's take a look at what our range does there.
That would make sense.
See if there are any big bets.
Uh, four percent, five percent, mm. I don't know.
You nailed it, jacks are the ones that wanna do it. Jackson tens. Little bit of nines.
Yeah, it's the island, huh?
Yep. Welcome to Danny's island. Sizing up. Away we go. Alright. I mean, uh, we've missed a different spot. Ooh, ways they stand. Herd aces, what are we going to do? There days with another Broadway?
I'm check.
Uh, this is, I think this is, this is one of the, I think this might be one of the spots where you bet really small.
Yeah, it's a one board if, if I've ever seen one.
I check.
If you had three aces, how big would you wanna bet?
Very small.
Yep. We're going to tell them that we have three aces, uh, this hand. This hand is gonna struggle against a check raise. It's got some equity, if it's got.
Yeah, I.
Over to the ten.
I put protecting this one, I think.
I'm shaking.
Okay.
It's our, it's our best.
What can he really raise though?
No, I mean, he's probably not gonna.
It's just a range bet. I think.
I do like small bet.
High range, but small.
Alright, we'll see if there's any checks here. Not really, cuz it is just a range bet small. And the idea is here, if we have an ace, we're just gonna bet this size a lot too. Right, when we have three aces, it's gonna be really hard for our opponent to continue, so we wanna keep them in. Wanna keep the fish on the line as long as possible, so. We can see that this bet size is just used predominantly throughout our whole range. Only sizing up with ace, king, or your kind of worst banana hands here.
Yeah, yeah, most of your ranges, of so much of your ranges, asex, kings, queens, jacks and ten X that. Pretty much could just. Bet everything else, be fine.
Savagely just checking quad aces, of course. It looks super suspicious. Well, Danny, you were wondering, we were gonna get check raised.
He's got ace, jack, whatever.
Alright.
I fold.
Well, it wants to call, but we're gonna fold it.
Our straight gives him a boat, come on, show us ace, jack.
Show us ace, but let's take a look at what our opponent does check raise with here. Because we need to find some check raises in game. So what is our opponent check raising? Our opponent is check raising twenty-five percent of their range.
Oh, just everything. Everything they continue.
Big guy, king, jack, king, queen.
Yeah.
It's, it's the ace, yeah. Yeah.
Can we see how this? Changes if we had bet four?
Sure.
Like our bet four. Oh, it's the same.
It's the same thing, they check raise the exact same combos. It's just, these are a little less EV. And king, jack folds more now.
Good to know. What was the sizing when we went one, he made it?
One point six. Ten percent.
What was the race size though?
Uh, his was seven point.
Yeah, eight. Alright, thanks.
Brother, when we do this, his race size is twelve. Spicy. And ace nine. Jack was clean. Alright. We get another, really good at this one.
Forty percent. I think I need to do this one a little more.
Okay.
One point six.
Yeah, this is a monotone board.
Yeah.
But king's the best card for us.
Yeah, we could go for either one.
I think there's gonna be a bit of this in here now. Yeah, thirty percent of this. But one point six is just fine too. Whoa. I mean, we have the board so locked up, can we give them the disrespectful ten percent double barrel? Small, micro?
Yeah.
Or do we have a spot where we size up and check sometimes?
Um, yeah, probably not size up, uh probably still a small bin check.
Yeah, I think this is almost always check with 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 a little bit of small bets, usually don't bet much at all on these.
I'm torn between four and nine, kinda like four, though.
Check to induce sometimes and four and nine.
Check.
Percent.
That'll show me.
Double dribble. Yeah. Oh, wow.
No, sir.
Is there only one thing to do?
Stop the love, I guess.
Go for all the maximum greed.
Next to suspense.
Take nine, well, if we bet the turn, we probably get him to call for one point six chips, but induce the two chip bluff.
True, we got an extra point four.
Alright, you saw this one before too, does everyone remember how frequently you're supposed to three bet this?
Nope.
Like a sliver?
Fifteen percent. Danny said twelve, twelve.
Great job.
Ted, I'll never forget.
I will never forget you cheating.
A spud.
Alright, Jack paired is good for us.
Four.
War. Hey, get behind that bit.
Yeah, both of those probably.
Yeah, primarily four, once you generate a bit of fold equity, has a spade. There we go. Oh, what a turn.
Oh.
So is this similar, is he raising every jack? Can we check really quick?
When we bet, is he check raising all his jacks? I don't think he'll check raise all his jacks.
He's gonna call.
When the top cards paired. Um, uh, they don't have as much. Check raising as is if the bottom card was paired. Because I get, we, they can't check raise cuz they dominate the top pair end of the board.
Yeah, he has very low frequency jams with queen jack.
The exact opposite of the ace a stun. Almost no raising.
Yeah, the the jams or things are the quote best hand at the moment, hands like tens and nines.
Alright, spicy. Ace ten, everyone three betting this frequently?
Yeah, well, no.
Yeah.
No, this is a fold, like.
I I thought about twenty-five percent.
Holding a bunch, for sure.
Thirty.
All day because 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 you usually are.
You're dominated.
You're usually try, you usually like, I think like the the um offsuit. Tens are dominated by the. Are are usually dominated here.
Okay.
I think it's thirty, thirty, thirty.
Thirty, 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 maybe fifty, twenty-five, twenty-five?
Maybe, yeah, yeah, oh, no.
Ninety-seven percent.
Yeah, there you go.
But everyone go home and spend the next month looking for one situation to three that eight ten here. How often you should buy this type of head.
Yeah, yeah, it's.
But it's just ace jack then, huh?
Yeah, it's the um, okay.
I don't.
If you have forty point one digs and he has thirty-nine point nine digs and it's a bounty, this is a great spot for three bet. Alright, so we get seven, seven deuce with a hand that we're not here with very often, holding the ace of spades. Ooh, middle paired board. Are we just going to press our advantage with over pairs, some micros, me, malls?
Now that we are here, oh.
It would fall.
Oh, cuz it's paired and it's low, it's like.
Yep.
Alright.
Is this a spot to give up? Jack's good for us.
Are we in the three bet pot?
We are in three bet pots all day long.
Alright, let's get up.
I like.
Oh.
Uh-uh, no, no, give up.
Oh, give up.
I'm muted, I'm I'm screaming barrel, barrel.
Alright, Walter and Joey had it right, they go for the small bet here, but you get the size up very frequently here now. So let's take a look at this structure and why we're doing this.
I don't like this with the ace of spades in my hand.
G two likes it.
Is ace ten good when the jack comes to barrel?
Jack's fairly irrelevant, right? Where is not really checking?
It is not a spot where we're checking very much at all, only checking ten percent of our hands.
Can we see?
Jacks.
Yeah, with the ace of a spade.
It's like ace, are we talking with the ace of spades?
No, it's still betting.
Oh. Yeah, just ace king is shutting down here, but not with the spade.
Checking without it.
Yeah, yeah, ace king checks with the club combo the most. Okay, so what is our opponent calling us with on that flop? They gotta be calling pretty wide here against our really small bet.
Nick, it might be nice to block ace, jack, and king, jack of spades.
So part of it is we generated so little fold equity that they're still here with eighty-nine percent of their starting range.
Yeah.
They just still have a lot of trash that was resilient against our small bet on the flop. So when the jack comes and they check. Wait, our range still wants to push its slight advantage in all spots.
If we bet four on the flop, how does that change our turn strategy here? Or were we, were we never betting four?
On the flop?
He, I don't think he was, he was just a small.
Yeah, with with our specific combo.
It is specific.
Was always small, but our range has a lot of four. Right, but the hands at the bottom are just trying to target auto folds. So all the better stuff, that's it, when we bet four. His range now folds thirty percent.
Ah, yeah.
So that's why we barrel is cuz we didn't generate the extra twen- nineteen or twenty percent of folds from his trash.
So can you click call and put the jack in uh really quick and we can see?
Yeah. So when we go with the four sizing. And he calls.
I'm checking combos, the ace of spades, so.
Exactly.
Much junk.
And he checks. We are now checking twice as much.
And like, which combos are we checking, ace, queen, ace, king offsuit?
Now we're checking with the spade. A lot more. Yeah, we don't, now we, it's that we, we wanna have the ace of spades, we don't wanna have the king of hearts with it.
What do we do with ace and combo?
It's not, it's not in range cuz it was always betting small here.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Oh, no, no, I was gonna say you look at ace jacks, it's similar, but that's top, top.
Yeah, but now it's, so now ace queen is the.
Miracle, no.
Right, you can see it wants to bet with the the spade and.
Why do you guys think it's wanting to bet with the spades so much here and like checking heart club?
They can't have ace jack of spades.
I mean, I don't think they're folding ace jack to our, any ace jack on the on the flop door, but they're too high up in range with ace jack. Like, I think ace jack of diamonds is calling at the flop bet.
Yeah, I guess, I get like, it wants to check with ace, with these ace queens. Because when an ace rolls off on the river and our opponent told these of spades, we're likely good against them. So we're gonna be able to get value with an ace when an ace comes on the river, when we don't have the ace of spades.
Yeah, but at the same time, if they have like ace, ten of spades, they're gonna call a bet and we're ahead of that and we get like. Value that we're not blocking a flush draw.
But they might.
But like, Jack and ace ten, like, uh suited with no backdoor or no draws to a lot of full then.
These hands are gonna are gonna struggle against the block.
Against the four, against the four, against the four, I think it's one point six, I'll probably always continue.
Can you go to the under the gun one call range, Pete, on the flop? Sorry, this is like throwing me off, I'm I, I know we're spending a lot of time on it, it's just weird to me.
Yeah, no, sometimes it's a good exercise to try and figure this stuff out.
Almost like a pure call still.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, that was a good point you made.
It's just too high up, you just can't let it go. Alright, I'm I'll I'll look into this later, sorry, that's just odd.
No problem. Yeah, I mean, he's. It is interesting cuz he's ja- like he's raising back his ace of spades here a lot.
Oh, that's probably what it is, and when he just calls, he doesn't have spades, so it's okay.
Yeah, so then, yeah, so then he has a worse ace, okay. Yeah, and against this sizing, against this sizing, he's.
Mostly raising flush.
Yeah, he's he's calling more of his flushes against the really small size, these worse flushes. Or with these worse aces. So, and raising his worst ones against our smaller bet. Tough spot. Okay, so ace, but not a great ace, our ace is chopping aces and sevens with the jack.
Man.
Half pot, stacked pot ratio.
I'm all in.
Danny is all in.
Uh, I'm check.
This is miserable, I'm I'm all in, I don't like it, but I'm all in.
It's kind of just. He just does the shot, I don't, we have, we have top pair, we're gonna be like ahead of Jack X so often.
Always just shut it. It's, we have twenty chips, there's forty chips in the pot, we got a surprisingly strong hand on the river.
And chop, what a calling space. Instant tag, never bluff that guy.
He's like, what are you repping, bro? You bet every street, the board changed every street, what can you have?
So is this like a high frequency fold and low frequency three bet?
I think this one is a lot of like four, thirty, forty percent three bet. And then fold the rest.
Then fold the trash.
I'm never calling this.
Right, it's, I agree with, oh.
It is very high three bets, this is the one that wants three bet the most, and it's still just strong enough to call.
Maybe against UTG, it falls out, but UTG one, it's okay.
Boom. Ooh, happy day.
Vegas.
Ace with, brother, small.
Gonna be four, right?
Four.
With two high cards, we don't go one, right?
No, I want to small, I think you can bet four or sometimes bet eight, I'm I'm like always betting four here with the spade in my hand.
Is anyone ever checking?
No.
No, I think this is, this is.
Good. Always be betting here.
I mean, I would check some hands, but definitely not top two.
Uh, I think it's just a range bet board, I don't think we're gonna have checks here.
Yeah, like, what what hands would, what hands would benefit from check, checking?
Pocket tens.
Jacks.
I'd bet jacks, maybe ace.
But like. Our range drills this board so hard, like.
Yeah.
Yeah, probably pocket queens with the queen of spades is the only hand I can think of that really wants to check. Right, wants him to allow him to start betting his jacks.
What about kings?
Kings are maybe too strong.
I'm, I don't have a single hand I'm checking here.
Yeah, I can't think, I can't think of a hand just because we have so many good hands here that the rest of our hands just probably just come along.
Nines, eights.
And even kings, even kings and queens can get value from a jack. You know, like.
Two percent, three percent.
Kings, queens, and aces. Right, and all just slivers. Really, it's kings that wanna do it and when you have the king of spades and the king of hearts, walking the continues. But not a very, not a very prominent part of the strategy.
Yeah, you guys are right, can simplify to no checks.
Yep, alright.
So actually, we will have checks now when the flush completes cuz it's better for his calling range that are through that range. Um, this hand, I'm probably still betting just small.
Six or twelve both seem good.
Yeah, I think I'm going like somewhere between in game, like seven-ish.
Yeah, this would be, I would be betting this like a third all the time, but. So probably lean towards six.
Yeah, I I like about eight, so yeah, I lean towards six as well.
Anyone ever take the micro bloat the pot for no good reason spot?
I wonder that we go, we do that on, do we do that on flush continuing warrants? I didn't think we you did that, I didn't think you bet that small.
What do you do with ace, king of diamonds here?
Uh, ace, king of diamonds, probably check a lot.
At twelve.
He's king of diamonds. I would probably just continue to bet like a third.
I I'd bet so I can check the river.
So we almost had every answer in the book on ace king of diamonds, so we should look at ace king of diamonds.
Yeah.
Let's.
I'm bid duly, I bet on the turn with ace king of diamond.
I would bet twelve.
As well, small, again, it's the same size, I'm betting the eight size with it.
Yeah.
So ace, king of diamond, all the ace kings are mixing. On that turn, they're all the same, really. So checking, betting small, betting half.
Yeah, I mean, we have a great hand and it's very vulnerable, so half makes some sense, right?
Um, do we size down with the spade in our hand on the offsuit side?
Probably.
Yes. Yeah, the only one that's going big is ace king. Every other offsuit combo is small.
Okay.
Alright, Jack, how often are you three betting? How often are you calling?
Sixty percent three bet.
I'm probably three betting like ninety percent, but I think it's probably, probably about a sixty-five percent three bet.
Yeah, thanks for the honest answer, Nick. Yeah, we looked at this a little bit earlier. Yeah, we looked at this a little bit earlier, protecting your flattening range. This is a hand that's gonna be able to do it. It's gonna protect you from squeezing. Which is what we'll be looking at uh, in the summer. And sixty forty, very nice split.
Call.
Anyone folding? Can I get a fold?
Sometimes. Sometimes.
I'm gonna four bet you mercilessly.
You need a very strong read to fold this.
Oh, scab these king.
This is why you can't fold this.
My read is I'm gonna lose.
Same here.
High frequency or low frequency?
I'm calling.
Is a high frequency. I've been looking at these ranges in a long time. I think king queen's a high frequency call and there's three bets more like. Fifty-ish percent?
I'm calling thirty percent. And so, eh, sorry, forty percent, sixty percent trip it.
I'd probably be calling this most of the time because I'd be mostly. Mostly um, three betting my ten, my suited tens, not my, my suited jacks, but.
I could be wrong. Called this eighty twenty. I call it eighty percent.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm calling too much.
A little too much. Is, so we are squeezing mostly or three betting mostly with our suited tens, but this queen jack. Definitely one along the straight and flush axis. It's gonna have a really high equity realization post flop. But it gets. But stuffed on. It's easy to get away from.
It still hurts.
It still hurts. He's queen. Often are you three betting this? How often are you flattening?
So I happened to look at this one. So I'll go last.
So anyone but Danny.
I'm three betting like seventy percent.
Uh, I'm the opposite. I'm three betting thirty or forty percent. Oh, with the raise, I'll call. Sixty percent.
So I was surprised cuz I thought we were supposed to flat here a ton, but I'm pretty sure it's the sixty to seventy percent region.
Three bet, like the offsuit.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say. I think this.
I was muted this whole time. I wasn't here part of the time, but I was muted this whole time.
Yeah, I think the silver one's like almost a pure call or like eighty percent call or something.
Yeah, we don't even see it.
Sued does not wanna get pushed off its equity and plays better post flop. You raise ace queen and they jam, you can fold pretty comfortably.
Look at this dog's breakfast. Disrespectful bet time or standard C bet?
C bet.
Looks like a four board to me. King high.
Oh, definitely not. See betting small on this board. Hell no.
I like four or eight.
But I think four is.
Mostly four, sometimes eight, small percentage eight.
Not really the hand for eight.
So when I, as, as the cards get closer and closer connected and the straight becomes, the straight draws become more and more. You tend to size up. So this one's spaced out, so I think it's gonna drive down the sizing.
Alright, I guess it is.
Uh, I mean, it's hard to find hands they call with. They don't have a draw here other than like. The ace x suited.
Yeah, but there's not gonna be as many good draws. Right, there's like, it's gonna be gutshot city.
Oh, yeah.
Gushot city.
Oh, yeah.
I didn't wanna go eight cuz. I think when we go four, we still get called by a lot that we're beating. And then if we go eight, we're narrowing his range more and. I'm just less familiar with. How to play that on future streets with a hand like this? Like how to play it across turns.
No, I don't know if this is good or bad, but my thought process was I have the ace of clubs, so I'm blocking more of his auto fold. So because of that, I'm gonna size up a little more often. Than I would if I didn't have the ace of clubs. To target his hands that kind of wanna call, but they're putting in miserable spot when we size up.
This is also the best unpaired hand. So like it, it beats everything that doesn't have a pair or two, right? So it also does wanna check here, which drives down the size like ace jack. Sizes up for that reason. Ace queen sizes down. Right between the two of those. In the minutia. Well, lots of draws got there that are not in our. Hand, but. If we are gonna bet. The nine of clubs is the nine that we're gonna bet because. He didn't pick up any equity with any flush draw hands that he was floating. I think it's going to. Check or barrel six.
See, I would pure check here cuz I don't feel the need to bluff after we took that. I mean, I don't think we're winning, but. I'd rather bluff ace jack.
Okay, and what hand after ace jack would you rather bluff?
Good question. Wait.
And so I, I agree with that. I'd bluff ace jack first, but I don't really wanna bluff like my. Ace five of clubs here, like those are just my gives up. I'd rather have a jack or a queen in my hand, so. Because of that, like I'm betting ace jack a lot here, but I think this is gonna need to bet some as well.
We could do some mergey stuff with like queen ten suited. And. Uh, yeah, no, I don't know. You're right.
Ace jack is actually better than ace queen because ace jack just turned a, a double belly buster. Right, ace queen still hasn't got shot, so it's. So the hands have kind of now reversed where ace jack is gonna be stronger. Than ace queen. Which is gonna want, which is gonna want ace jack check and gonna make one ace queen wanna bet, I think.
Do we have showdown value against anything except ace jack? We don't, right? I guess we gotta bluff. Alright.
Um. Man, what size though, when, when we?
Small. Because he didn't pick up any flush.
I think we'll ha- have. Both sizes in range still. I think it's mostly small. But I think we'll have some twelve too.
Yeah, I see both being a thing.
Yeah, I'm targeting ace high spades, ace high hearts and ace high diamond.
It does check a lot for what it's worth.
Yep.
Uh, can we look at uh, the ranges to where we're bluffing from?
Yeah, let's see if ace jack checks more than ace.
Cuz now, I guess if it goes check, check and we hit an ace or queen, we're still winning a lot.
Well, a queen, I'm never betting with this hand.
They're both, we don't bet, we just show it down and.
Our, our range is checking a ton now.
Um, so what are our lowest equity? Hands here, we're betting. Where are our bluffs?
A pair, under pairs. Still betting.
Jacks and queens make a lot of sense, double blocking the nuts.
Still betting tens. Looks like tens is our worst bets here. But they're all pretty high equity still.
Seems like they, there's no, no more, not much bluff, right?
Yeah, I, I think you bluff, I think you bluff a lot of your ace offsuit ace six because it's just the only stuff you're, pretty much the only stuff you have that doesn't have any. Have any, um.
Exactly.
That is, is it a marginal main hand at this point?
Yeah, ace eight is the only one, ace queen is checked, that's all.
Yeah, our aces are, are the worst thing. These are, these are where our blocks are coming from. Is queen ace jack, ace eight.
It still does kinda suck to bet here and get jammed on, but uh.
I'm gonna say we again, we're drawing the four outs a lot, so who cares?
Exactly, that's, that was the end of my sentence, yeah.
Very fun. Alright, we've seen this one, one third, one third, one third. Very nice rainbow.
Jack high. We start to get some eight in here maybe.
Yep. I like betting it with his hand actually.
The more it's connected, the more we size up. Right? So I think it's still gonna be primarily four.
I'm, I'm four.
Yeah, eighth is definitely a thing.
I'm with four.
As the, as the jack comes into a nine and then as the jack comes into a ten, I think we're gonna see more and more of this.
Can we look at a range? I, I actually think I like small with this hand with the king of spades, thinking about it more. The jack of spades is on the board and he's not calling with like jacking offsuit.
King queen.
So like.
Eight drives it down.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I said jack connects more with like a ten or a nine. You're gonna start to see big bets needing some shows at forty.
Yeah, when our, when our other card is a club, it sizes out.
Yep, cool.
If we change this to.
Yeah, change it, nah, to ten.
Nine.
Nine percent.
Right?
Oh, no.
Went down.
Yes.
Went down. Ten, I think is gonna make it higher.
Oh, twenty-six percent all in.
Ooh, yeah, Jack ten boards are interesting boards because you get to like do a lot of shoving.
So Jack nine is the last cautious board.
On the eight, he has a lot of gutters. On the nine, he has a lot of uh, pairs or just like open enders. So that'll drive it. Down a little more, I guess. Whenever there's a lot of gutters, you size up, right?
Okay. Low, low three bet here with ace ten. This hand wants to flood a lot. We saw this earlier with the other suited aces. Right, this is a, this, this class of hand is a hand that I don't three bet off. I am just very heavy with my flats with these suited aces. The highest suited aces. Oh, aren't we glad we three bet?
Thinking you go four or eight, either one's fine. Nope, never eight.
Or.
It's too disconnected. Deuce is such a brick, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, we have other hands that are. Yeah, but we do have hits that will wanna go here.
I think so as well cuz like ace jack, pocket queens, like hands that are vulnerable here, especially on a two-tone board.
Yeah, I mean, I would, yeah, I would think we would have a. I saw. I'm surprised but not surprised by that. I think ace ten probably just is like. Has too much.
Yeah, thirty-five percent, but never with the front or back door.
Yeah, just too good. But like ace jacket, it's almost pure queens. It's like eighty percent, seventy percent.
King jack as well.
Lots of big bet board, big bets here, but just never this hand. Or the other thing is ace ten is also blocking his continues with other spades. Right? Oh, hey.
Crazy, this is small.
Ooh, might just jam it here. Uh.
I think you can maybe call this a little bit. I think this is just a pretty high frequency shove at this point. You're just fine playing, playing for, I think you're not flush draws, it just fine playing for it here.
Would you rather jam ace queen of spades or ace ten of spades?
Yeah, that was my thought.
Um, we don't have ace queen of spades here because we don't three bet ace queen at all.
Oh, that's true.
Do we not? It's a pure call?
I think, I think ace queen and ace jack suited are pure calls if I remember that here was the correct.
Ace queen spades.
Let's take the. Just confirm that I believe it is a pure flat, basically.
I know it's a very high, very high frequency flat. I don't know, I don't know it's pure.
Yeah, I know the ace created ace jack suit. Early position, early position, all the way to a ton of flattening, if not pure flat.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, dude.
Yeah, that square is pure.
Ninety-nine point nine percent ivory stuff, so, okay, so.
Uh, I'm with Danny, I called you.
I wanna let a bluff turn.
I mean, I, I don't want him, I want him to like fold. Fold or call and run our equity, like. I'd rather call ace king because we have two overs to the board.
Yeah, like I think if we have ace king, we can run equity here. If we, if we somehow have ace queen of spades, we can run equity here. But.
And remember, if he has worse flush draws, he's gonna call off.
Yeah.
We could sometimes be dominating a hand like. King nine suited, for example. Or king six suited, or king queen suited.
Nine eight of spades.
Nine eight of spades, exactly.
I think I'm always jamming here and just run my equity, knowing that if he calls, I have nine outs plus three for the ace a lot of the time. And whatever he folds is good.
And it's usually just gonna be is like, probably like his.
Probably the solver has some stupid seven, eight of diamonds here.
Jack. Goodbye, Jack.
Frequency.
Yeah, I mean, remember we are the three better there, so we still have aces, kings and queens at full frequency, so. Our, our, our bluff with the spade draw there is a little protected by our range. Okay, again, a hand that I do not three bet often enough. Seventy percent.
Crap. Wow.
Yeah, this, this range, this ace ten, ace nine, ace eight suited. I gotta find some of these in my game cuz I am just a hundred percent flattening these.
Yeah, I, I, I usually find the east side suited, but it's the east ten, and I'm usually always folding AC, which it actually shouldn't be doing.
Uh, okay. Oh. Queen, seven deuce, not very many draws. Is this a one and done?
I would check here.
Never checking. I bet eight.
Think this handle checks some, but when I bet, I'm betting eight.
Yeah, I think, I think queen seven two, two tone is pure range, so this is probably like a four.
Four or eight is great.
It is just four. Yeah, this board texture, I would just be inclined to try and get as much fold equity as possible here. Oversizing.
We aren't three betting that many queen X. We have. Queen, king suited some, ace queen off, and then queen back suited. And then over pairs.
Yeah. So it wants to, it wants to push the equity small with the over pairs, right? When we look at the range advantage, one side to the other. Right, we have a narrow advantage all throughout the range, so it wants us to just bet small. With our slightly better best hands. Oh, disgusting.
Oh, my gosh.
Look at that. Look at that check raise. Not even a spade in sight. That was savage. Alright, high frequency three bet. Find your tens in game. Uh, back doors, back doors wanna check. That means uh, three flush needs two more. Three straight needs two more.
Maybe a tiny bit, but this, this feels like a hand that can go either one or. One point six or four. I would, I would be, I would probably be going really small in game, but. This would probably be one of my twenty percent bets, like my three, but so I'll go with one point six.
Yeah, I don't think ace with another Broadway is gonna have a lot of this size bet, though.
Yeah, ace on prime, yeah.
Yeah. I lean forward, but I can see both.
My hand wants to check my, I think my range wants to bet.
So does that mean one point six then?
No, that means the knit me is like, check. And the animal's like, bad. But one point six it is.
Actually, four, it likes four a little bit better.
Yeah, both very like fifty fifty here, right? Yeah, and that's just a, it's ace with a queen or, or, our range wants to bet. Even though our hand savagely wants to check.
We've kinda yet to find a board where we have a big checking frequency, huh?
Yeah, usually. Yeah, you usually, there's usually not a ton of those in three bet pots.
Mm-hmm.
It's really hard to find.
Like the middling connected stuff, maybe?
Seven, eight, nine, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, you're gonna have, you're gonna have outlier boards, but you have a lot. You just don't have a lot of like, uh.
Louis once said three bet C bet, and I've never gone back.
Especially like early, early, the ranges are pretty tight.
Well, you can see like as a broad scale, it always works. But the boards that we want to uh check on, remember like are gonna be the ace mid low or ace low low. Right, those are the ones that are gonna have, have uh fairly high checking.
Yeah, the, 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 the wheel aces, your, your eight, seven, six type boards, some of your ten high boards will check too.
The, the, you're playing kicker battle a lot boards, because like when it's ace low low, your kicker matters. So like, you wanna put it all in with ace ten when your opponent could have ace jack, or ace nine when your opponent could have ace ten. Right, and they're never folding because the board's just safe and. It's a spot where both players just wanna play cautiously. Uh, queen banana, banana, bet four.
That's more one than I expected.
Oh.
Good luck.
Luck.
What's he have?
Oh, I got there.
Oh, he flopped the, the combo draw, flush draw got shot.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Okay, spicy. All right, we'll do one or two more. Oh. Oh, happy days. Ween ten connected with a flush draw.
Four again.
There anyone who wants to bet eight?
I want to explicatively, but I'm sure the solver is gonna pick four.
Maybe like ace queen would bet it.
Queen ten connected pretty good.
I mean, I would be betting. I think there might even be some, would there ever be all ins on this board? On a queen ten, cuz I know when Jack ten, you have a lot of all ins, but. We should look at that, we can play this out.
Ship it.
Ship it?
Okay.
Good luck running your equity against us, Mister Flush Draw.
Yes, flush draw, yeah, oh, oh. Oh, got them.
How do you like that?
Never happens in the game.
I hear someone didn't see it.
All right, the police dog, how often are you three betting the police dog, canine unit?
Um, probably a hundred percent cuz usually you're suited nines and tens, three bet. To try to get the offsuit jacks to fold in these configurations, so I would be.
I've been folding this shit, but maybe.
Folding, Viv, how do you, how do you score huge live tournament scores when you're folding king nine suited?
Cuz you're playing live tournaments, that's why.
Yeah, live tournaments is just different.
I mean, I should be three betting some of these suited crap more.
Alright.
What was the, what was it, seventy?
Yeah, uh, not quite, yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, king nine, so we flop a three straight no flush.
Actually, you should be three betting this even more live, honestly.
Yeah, there was, you get flatted in four spots behind you.
You only have one table. So if you're lazy and you pull this on an online tournament, okay, but if you're playing live and um. Anyway, that's another conversation.
It's less about laziness for me and more about I'm getting called by four people behind me. As soon as I three bet any hand, no matter what position I'm in.
Oh, yeah. For sure.
You know what? I'm the best at poker that according to, that people are just folding ace king to me all, all day. I go all in, they pull ace king, yeah, and I have ace queen, and they're just like, um, and I'm like, I get away with murder.
Yeah, I do notice people tend to put you at the top of your range a lot more live, like they're just so much more scared.
We got about twelve now.
Wow, uh, double flush draw?
Yeah, I think we get to bet huge.
Can we even jam here?
I actually, I was gonna say, is this a, this is a candy jam?
Not unreasonable. But I mean, our opponent has better kings when they have a king, a lot.
Well, I don't put my opponent on a king, I'm gonna put him on a, on a ten and on an eight, you know, let's be realistic here. We just gotta put our.
This is, this is one, yeah, this is one of our best kings though, because we probably don't have, well, one of our better kings.
Alright. Stop that turkey.
What? Yep, I put my opponent on an eight. I don't, I don't understand how people do that, they're just like, I put you on this, and it's like.
On this particular hand, like.
They called, no, they folded, they better fold.
They fold. Alright.
Haha, you folded a straight draw.
Okay, so how often are you flattening pocket? How often are you flattening it, Viv? How often are you three betting?
I'm flattening less than jacks. Yeah, less than jacks.
No, you flat it more than jacks.
Yeah.
Jacks, you flat it more than jacks.
This one's sixty forty instead of forty sixty.
I'm gonna raise.
Well, we're gonna raise today forty-two percent of the time.
It's exactly.
Range construction of our three bets with our jacks and tens quickly.
Yeah, I, I pure, all of this pure flat these tens and jacks in these situations, and I probably need to mix more. I'm actually probably a little too passive.
Yeah, you gotta get in there with your sevens and eights as well.
Yeah, I mean. Um, yeah, I, I have this issue. I think I have the issue you talked about before, Pierre, where I'm doing, or I think my top of my range is too linear, and I'm not protecting it enough.
Look at this block of primarily three betting. Get your three bets out.
Yep. See, I find this stuff fine, but I'm also like, I think, I think my checking range is too like.
The chart again? We, we three bet jacks way more, right?
Yeah, we three bet jacks sixty percent of the time, and we three bet tens forty percent of the time.
Okay, so I'm not a nit for flattening jacks occasionally, right?
No, it's just fine.
But it saved me in the yesterday's, I mean, in Saturday's tournament, because I was like. I flatted jacks and then like all in, all in behind me, and then I had like an easiest fold ever.
Yep. Alright, uh, so we have top set on a possible flopped, but not likely seventy-nine straight. Probably not in our opponent's range. How do we?
Jack, you can check the nuts here.
Yeah. I.
Bet four.
I'll bet.
How happy are we gonna be if a nine rolls off or a jack rolls off?
Right. Oh, how? Well, those are the ten percent of the time that happens.
I'm like always checking this hand here.
Gotta build a pot.
Primarily checking, but betting small is both a thing. Oh, we induce a little blow. The three seems pretty safe. Do we just keep the fish on the line here?
I click back.
I like click back, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm kind of into that.
It'd be hard for them to call. If we raise.
Well, he's stabbing with something.
Raise is definitely a thing.
Gonna call a bunch.
Happy days.
Alright.
He's calling.
Pocket sevens. Might have gone with the click back.
Yeah, we might have.
Yeah, let's take a quick peek at that here.
In live game, you click back, they never fold, never.
I didn't think even the solver probably calls like the vast.
Probably, yeah, yeah.
Our opponents. Yeah, based with his decision, continues the pocket sevens at full frequency. Holds twenty-six percent of his range, so holds some fours, fives. King with a gutshot. King jack over, king queen over, ace jack over. Just folds these overs that are really in bad shape against us anyways. This is too bad, like when we click back, we get value from some stuff. But we just fold out all the stuff that we're beating.
Can we see what we're supposed to click it with? Besides uh slow played nuts.
Uh, so we have some nines and some eights and nines. It looks like we're turning nines into a bluff here. Right?
A nine, yeah, nines are like, uh.
Yeah, but like even pocket nines, right?
Yeah, queens, yeah, queen, queens, I love queens, like. Queens, aces and kings wanna do the. Queens are like almost full frequency.
I think queen ten suited. It's like, alright, if you're gonna bet that size, I think I have the best hand, I'm clicking you up. That's going.
We don't have a ton of tens, so. Alright, one more. Ace queen. Always, always, always three betting. Screen is jack off suit, wants the three bet, figure out where it's at. Flop the ultimate trap technology.
Hmm.
So our king with a Broadway with a flush draw. Pretty spicy spot. Oh, look at that. A little bit of staphylophagus.
Wow.
Lots of sizing up on this texture.
How much of this is a function of our specific suits, though?
I think it's so hard, it's.
We have the uh.
I think the jam is that, but I think it's gonna size up a lot here.
Yep, it is containing hearts and spades, really, it's the queen of spades. But mostly queen ace of hearts is definitely a jam candidate. Aces, when you don't have a spade, also just jam here. Or pot it at least. And queen also has some pots with a spade and with more so we without. And of course, you need to find some blush for that, so pocket mines with a spade, just plots it. Ace eight.
That's a punt.
Okay. Disrespectful bet. Uh, this is the worst, I, I always feel like this is so bad.
Yeah, came out.
Kidding me, how can you guys call?
I don't know.
I don't know, like, like, it, it's like, I'm gonna say something nuts here, like. Do we ever shove this?
Yeah, no, it's not.
I mean, I'm just thinking like, like, solver loves like blocking the backdoor hearts. We have, we have like backdoor draws to the nuts. Is this just something we just stuff?
For the shove.
I, I agree. I think I'm shoving here a lot, actually, but only. Like if I had the ace of spades, I would never shove, I would just fold.
Is this a three bed pot?
It is all three bed pots today.
I'm mainly folding here.
Of course you are.
You're butterhead jam.
Shove it. Kudos to you two.
Well, Jack ten, he gets there for this.
Uh.
Gross.
I was starting this game, obviously.
Can we look at our range to see what we're jamming there?
Sure.
I don't, I don't think it's all ace queen combo.
No, 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 I, I, I think it's, I think it's ace of heart combos.
That was the ace of fire. I think it's more you don't want to use space.
So. Uh, what if, we wanna look at our. Response when we're jamming here, it is. Queen of spades.
It's queen of spades and the.
Uh huh.
Bit of the ace of spades. And the jack is, it's a bit of the ace of spades.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's just we, we have the ace queen combo there that is like. Probably like our best.
Exactly.
Backdoorish combo. Then I think it's just, it seems like a lot of sense to shove. Yeah, I don't think, this, that's not a spot where you're not shoving like ace. Ace of, ace queen with like no backdoors, ever.
We're just shoving.
Yeah.
Can we see the reaction when we jam?
So our opponent is calling off with pair, full frequency, mixing with a jack. Wait, and so when we look at those jacks. Jack nine of spades, ten jack of spades. And folding. Okay, so continuing with the spade draw and jack, holding a jack without a spade draw. It's gonna be really flushed, flushed driven for them. Right, top pair is just going for it, doesn't matter what you have, second pair is flush driven.
Yeah, do we really wanna jam against this range?
I don't care whether we're jamming.
Percent, right?
That calls eighty-three percent, jam sixty headfold sixteen, like we don't have full deck.
I don't get why we choose ace jack with the jack of spades, cuz then we block all the jacks we dominate.
Yeah.
But that was like the only ace jack that jammed.
Alright, Jack eight, six, super connected. Super good for our opponents, compressed range.
Think checker bet both are fine.
Hey, that's the one, I mean, it's not disconnected, right?
Yeah. Yeah, the jack and the eight, like there's gonna be all kinds of gut shots all over here.
Yeah, this could be a spot where you size up even.
I think that was a size up, that's what I was trying to say.
But I don't wanna size up this hand, I'm in that boat again.
I think that was almost the same, I don't know.
Yeah, like when we move the eight up to a nine, it, it actually sized down a little bit, and then we moved it to a ten, it went bananas.
And even Jack eight was bananas already, I think, right?
It, it had some sizing up, it had more sizing up than Jack nine, and, and Danny hit the head here. Right, like, there's all kinds of gut shots here, but when you move it to a Jack nine. Now it has some open-ended and some gut shots, and when you move it to Jack ten, it has lots of open-ended. And some gut shots, so as his straight draws become higher and higher equity. Right, it changes the strategy a little bit, so here, we're just gonna be able to generate some folds with this sizing. That Jack nine boards are gonna, we're gonna have to be more cautious on, and Jack ten, we're just gonna be, well, we're just gonna shove all our over cards.
Right.
Right, like on Jack ten, this, this ace queen might shove. But here, right, it's mixing these two. But we start to see, you're, you're right, say, you're, we're starting to see this little eight points oh five sizing. But we start to see, you're, you're right, say, you're, we're starting to see this little eight points oh five sizing come in. Right, then we'll see that fall out at jack nine and then we'll see it come back in at jack ten.
Right.
Hmm, I do not find that that big at all here.
I'm just checking way too much in three bet pots.
So. Return the ace.
I think we're pretty safe here, he doesn't really have ace drag too often, or else he's check raising, he doesn't have ace king.
Nope.
So I.
In some traps.
You wanna go twelve then? Or just six? I think both are viable. Eighteen, I mean.
Eighteen feels like too large for the stack size.
He does have a seven, ace six suited.
I feel like I would be going twelve here, trying to set up. Reasonable-ish type of. River.
Queen ten is double gutter now.
I'm going eight here, like always.
Ten is open ended.
There's no eight, six, there is a six. I'm actually thinking to shove it.
Yeah, I'm thinking, I'm thinking twelve or shoves.
I don't like shove.
Yeah, I like twelve to set up like the sixty-ish percent river. River, river sizing. I'm not sure like what shoving accomplishes.
Twelve, twelve sets up like one third river though.
Is it, I thought it was bigger than that, I'm sorry.
So on a river of seven or higher. The board is going to undergo a pretty big shift. Right, so on a six or lower, we're probably fine. But. Seven through king are bad for us and it's gonna be hard for us to. Put in more chips on the, the river. With, when half the deck comes, so I think it's gonna wanna pick these two sizes.
You guys have talked me into jamming.
I think jam's gonna be a little tough. It's only gonna continue with some combo draws that have pretty high equity. And of course, some aces. And whatever traps he has.
So I think is like our, we have a lot of asex here, so I think our range benefits from just betting smaller time on this card. Um. Like eight and twelve both make a lot of sense, I don't think bigger than that does, but I'm going eight with a lot of my range here.
Three percent, four percent.
So, no one's really wrong here, you know, except for me when I was betting eighteen. But the twelve is just fine, six is the primary choice. A little bit of micro, a little bit of splashiness. Yeah, I'm always sizing up here, looking to. Front mode before my, before the board texture changes here.
Is that why we're supposed to bet six?
Oh.
Queen ten.
Rebuy.
Queen ten.
Queen ten of spades, yeah, combo draw just shoves it in.
Yeah, that makes a lot of sense.
Yeah.
They had produced a spade on the river, unfortunately.
When we take the six sizing, we'll see if he check raises that as well.
Yeah, they got me with the queen eight, the other day.
Oh, yesterday I used my, my ninety eight percenter in a one thirty dollar tournament, that's what you're supposed to do. You're supposed to use your, you're supposed to get runner, runner. In, in the one thirty.
Alright, so he does have some.
Response against our other bet sizes.
Yeah, I did, I switched to the six size. And he primarily calls with queen ten with the spade now. He doesn't jam very much anymore.
Because he can see that he were cheaper.
Yeah. When we size up. Now he's just committed and goes all in.
I see that a lot.
Yeah. And when we shove, I mean, it's a combo draw, so he's gonna call off. Right, when we. Think micro sizing. Again, he is just always calling it.
What is our range doing? Like, I'm, I'm betting on the ace turn, like, I'm range betting and mostly betting small.
So it's checking thirty percent.
Yeah, looks good.
Betting small fifty percent and sizing up a little bit.
Okay, cool.
So if you're, if you're just betting small again, that's just fine. Uh, it does have a lot of checks.
Like mostly are jacks, it looks like checks, well, if they are, ace jack, well, ace jack is too fair.
Yeah, checks kings and queens now a lot when the ace turns, so.
Yeah, th- those kids make sense to wanna bet small, so I, you're, you're gonna have a lot of hands here. That are going to want to bet small, like you're ace.
Can I see the river action?
Yeah, I mean, it's just the.
Shoot, we're supposed to raise this one too?
Alright, if we bet six and he calls. Then like. I assume.
What river would you like?
Yeah, I think I'm jamming. Oh, every river, I can think of a river I don't jam.
Put a four on it.
You want the four of hearts?
The brickiest, the bricks.
Is there a river you don't?
It never makes him two pair.
Is there a river you don't jam, ace queen, Vince?
Uh, a spade, like a, maybe like a king of spades.
Ten or a nine?
King of spades is a great card, cause he doesn't, I mean, who am I lose to jack king suited at that point, cause I mean, I guess queen ten suited as well.
Yeah.
Actually, if you make that the king, I bet you, I'm actually, could you make that the king of spades? Or because I'm curious, like if the flush comes in, I don't know that we, I'm not sure that you shove.
With the ace jack, with the ace jack and queen of spades on board, he's gonna have so few flushes in range.
Does he dunk first of all, ever on this card? And then does he, I wanna see a ten after this, alright.
Yes, don't seventy five percent of the time.
Some dunk jamming.
Oh, okay. Well, that would change how we would approach this.
Well, say he jams, what do we do with his hand, and then say he checks, what do you do with his hand?
So when he jams.
Getting in the weeds now.
Ace queen is a marginal call off. And when he checks. Ace green is a check back. Sometimes you can bet if you have the queen of spades. Pretty thin.
What about a ten of diamonds river? Ten of clubs river. Spicy. Same question, does he dunk?
A ten of clubs to me is like scary.
He has a little bit of all in, but primarily checked. His all ins are consisted of. Uh, ten, eight, two pair, seven straight, eight, seven.
Bluff.
Bluff. And king queen. Which is the straight.
Nuts.
Yeah, so he has two straights and some bluffs.
When he checks.
Checks. Ace queen just checks back.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I did, yeah, I did connected, yeah, with. On the boards that connect.
Ace king's still going for it.
Yeah, that's all it too.
B day, screen.
Alright, well, I think we'll wrap up here, thanks for checking out the study session. I hope you guys learned some stuff about three bet pots against early position. You guys all find some spicy raises over the next little while. And uh, we'll see you back next week for a little more studies. If you wanna rewatch this video, it is available on our YouTube channel. That's slipperyrock ninety nine, come and take a look.
Thanks a lot, Pete, thanks a lot, everybody else.